All right, welcome everyone. I'd like to call to order the Fridley Public School Board meeting for November 19th. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. All rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening again. We'll start, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Adam Seconded by Pruwedo to approve the agenda for November 19th. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. Next up will be a spotlight on recognition. Dr. Heil.
Thank you. Good evening Chair Riddle and School Board members. I'll be sharing with you today Employee of the Month for the month of October as well as for the month of November. So, congratulations to Barb Rohan, our Employee of the Month for October. Barb began serving Fridley Public Schools in 1997. She worked as a paraprofessional at the FCC for a few years and moved into the Transition Program in 2005. Barb has been working in the Special Ed Department at Fridley High School since 2008. Over the years Barb has worked tirelessly for our special education students. She is hardworking, committed, and a strong advocate for all students. A colleague noted, "Barb is a great resource for the kids she has assigned and the rest of the class too, bringing humor with firmness to push students to become more confident of their own skills." She also demonstrates great empathy. Another staff member commented, "Barb is funny, caring, and extremely kind to the staff and students she works with. She knows how to relate to the students whom she works with very well." So Barb is now retiring after serving the district for 22 years. We want to not only congratulate Barb on the honor of the Employee of the Month, but congratulate Barb on her retirement from Fridley Public Schools. Fridley Public Schools is deeply appreciative of all the years of service from Barb Rohan and she will be deeply missed. And Patty Hand, high school principal, wrote that. Next we have our Employee of the Month for November, that is Chelsea Jones, and she's Administrative Assistant. Congratulations to Fridley Public Schools' November Employee of the Month, Chelsea Jones. She's Administrative Assistant at Stevenson Elementary. She has been at Stevenson for almost three years, and this short time she has excelled in her role. Chelsea makes Stevenson a better place every day. She kicks off her day by successfully problem solving, getting morning challenges. She cares for the students and staff in the building. Chelsea is a kind and welcoming to every person she encounters. Students come in every morning just to get morning hugs from Chelsea. She contributes to the overall climate of the building with her acts of kindness. Every Wednesday she makes popcorn for the entire staff. For conferencing she has ensured teachers have meals at each evening. These are just two examples of how she goes above and beyond to make Stevenson great. Ms. Jones is effective and efficient in her role and she is always looking to strengthen her skillset. She just finished taking an Excel class on her own time to become even more efficient. According to her colleagues, she connects well with parents and puts them at ease. Chelsea has a phenomenal memory which enables her to remember students and families by name. This goes a long way in building strong relationships with the Stevenson's families. Chelsea has a contagious personality, making Stevenson a great place to work. And that's from Principal Darryl Vosler.
Thank you. Congratulations to our Employees of the Month for both October and November. Next up we begin with student, or Superintendent and Staff Reports, beginning with the Fridley Middle School Veterans Day speakers. Dr. Heil.
Okay, thank you. This year marked our 33rd year of the Veterans Day Program at Fridley Middle School. The program honors United States military veterans and also serves as an opportunity to teach students about the dedication and sacrifice of service members. Veterans from the community, including members of the Fridley American Legion and the Fridley's Veteran of Foreign Wars, or VFW Post 363, were present and received recognition during the ceremony. The keynote speaker was Mr. Paul Walzac, who served at the National Guard 257th Military Policy Unit. The 8th grade band and choir, under the direction of Mr. Blair Berger, performed and there were student speakers. Tonight, we are thrilled to welcome the 8th grade speakers to share their speeches about a veteran who was special in their life, Emily Duba, Ethan Adler, and Alexis Bright. Emily, please.
Denny Sabinski was born on September 19th, 1947, in Minneapolis, Minnesota. His parents were Adeline and Raymond. She was a housewife and a waitress and he worked at Braniff Airlines. He has three brothers and two sisters. His twin brother Russell also served in the military. Denny went to college at the U of M and was in a traveling rock band for his service. He was drafted into the Army on June 4th, 1968, to go fight in Vietnam. Denny was only 20 years old. He went to Fort Campbell in Kentucky for 10 weeks for basic training and then went to Washington State for advanced infantry training, and then went to Vietnam. It was hard for him in the beginning to adjust to military life because of the discipline, and everything was always planned. He said that if you said think you were punished, you had to know things. It was also hard because of the weather changes. It was usually either very hot or raining. Life was hard because there weren't really any front lines. You didn't know for sure who was friends or enemies when it came to locals. Any time of the day or night, fighting was possible. Also booby traps were everywhere and made out of anything. You never left any garbage on the ground. You always had to make sure that people had your back. You needed brothers to protect and have fun with. Denny met this little girl that lived in an orphanage nearby. She walked up to him and grabbed his hand, so he picked her up and took a picture with her that he still has today. Denny would bring any extra food and clothes to her for a year. Since she lived in an orphanage, she had nothing, so he decided to help her. He was really sad to leave her when his time was up. Another thing that helped him be distracted was music. He played guitar. A lot of his buddies would ask him to play some songs on his guitar. He had experimented with a lot of different types of music, so he could play for anyone. He bought a $10 guitar in the village that was really cheap and not good quality, but it still made music, so he used it. I think veterans are very important because they put our country first. I think people that are drafted are also very important because they didn't even choose to fight, but they do anyway and help us win wars. A lot of things that happen, a lot of things happen while you serve, and a lot of it doesn't stay there, it comes with you. Like diseases, hearing loss, dizziness, et cetera. Also the dust can hit you hard and it's hard to heal. Veterans are very strong people and being able to go back to normal life is hard, and I admire that about them. A lot of veterans are injured and it's hard to go back to your family, seeing you different than when you started. Veterans deserve a lot of things for what they do and how they cope.
Thank you Emily.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Emily. All right, our next speaker, Ethan Adler.
Dale McJunkin was born on September 13th, 1950, in Fort Knox, Kentucky. Before he joined the Army, he finished tech school for computer programming. As he was finishing school, the draft for the Vietnam War was starting. He spoke to his older brother, Richard, who convinced him to join before he was drafted because you were treated better as a voluntary recruit than a draft pick. He started in the Army's 213th Assault Support Helicopter Company and was eventually reassigned to the 62nd Command Aircraft Company where he flew around VIPs. He followed Richard into flight school as computer science was full at the time he selected. He chained at Fort Walters to helicopters referred to as TH-55s. Then he went to Fort Rucker, Alabama, to fly UH-1 helicopters, or Hueys, and then learned how to fly the helicopter known as Genoxx, or TH-47s. He was assigned to Vietnam where he served four years transporting supplies back and forth from the front line. It was a weekend to his tour in Vietnam, and his roommate didn't want to go on call, so Dale went to him. Dale went for him, and he went to his 4:00 AM post. They waited for 12 hours and then an emergency mission was called. Dale was assigned to be the copilot on this mission. They were given a different helicopter with 24 50-pound gas drums to transport your troops on the front line. As they were flying, they heard bullets from 51 caliber machine guns hitting the aircraft. The pilot hit the button to drop the cargo to help the helicopter land safely, but it didn't work. Suddenly they realized that the helicopter itself was on fire. They had to drop the cargo manually by pulling the release mechanism. As they were coming down for landing, the helicopter was shot and blown off course, so it landed really rough. The helicopter broke in half and twisted the front end 120 degrees. The group spent the night in an armored personnel carrier with hammock set up inside, and they had a C-130 airplane equipped with machine gun turrets protecting them from the oncoming troops. The next morning, back at the base, a doctor evaluated injuries the group perceived in the crash. Dale's injuries included many cuts on his leg for which a surgeon recommended he be awarded a Purple Heart. He was given a Purple Heart Award for being wounded during his war duties at a ceremony in front of the company. After his tour at Vietnam, Dale was sent back to Texas where he spent four more years serving in the Army. He continued to fly helicopters and was even assigned to fly VIPs around for President Johnson's funeral. Dale McJunkin is my grandpa, and the military taught him many skills. He learned how to cooperate with people, teamwork, and staying fit. He also learned that you can have different opinions on how to do stuff, but you can work together to do your job. Growing up in a military family, his brother, his father, five brothers, and one sister all served in the US Army, it helped him realize the importance of the military and how to deal with the death involved. He thought of the war as just a job, and I am very proud that my grandpa was in the war. I look up to him in many ways and I think I want to be in the military when I'm old enough. Veterans like my grandpa are very important for America. They go up years of their lives to make sure that we have our freedom. It is because of them that we have the opportunity to go to school to learn, and I feel it is important to serve our country or do something useful to make it up to them. My grandpa made it out of the war, and I'm thankful, but some people weren't so lucky. I think that the most important thing to take from this is that they sacrifice for whatever it was, whether it was their time, a limb, or their life. Their sacrifices matter because we have freedom in America, and I feel like we should use our freedom to our advantage and do something useful for them.
Alexis Bright.
My dad, Michael William Pullu, was born on February 6th, 1966, in Anchorage, Alaska. He served in the Navy for 21 years straight out of high school, 1983 to 2004, and he enlisted. He says he chose the Navy because he didn't want to be a Marine. The Air Force wouldn't take him and his parents wouldn't sign the paperwork for the Army. He went to boot camp for eight weeks, but nothing really extraordinary happened to him during this period. He remembers a few of his instructors and said that they were firm but fair to him and the other members of his service. He got generalized military training but worked on airplanes, specifically F-14 and A-73 Corsairs, so he got trained how to repair jet engines and aircraft fuel systems. He did what he had to do because he didn't really have a choice. Even during the holidays, he couldn't go home to his family because he had a job to do for his country. His great uncle was also a veteran in the Army, PFC Michael Coliallo, and he got a Medal of Honor for combat action in Germany during World War II. His dad, Harold Pullu, was in the Air Force, and his uncle Leroy Pullu was in the Army. He was involved in many conflicts and wars. In chronological order, there were Operation Iraqi Freedom, Operation Enduring Freedom, Persian Gulf War, Bosnian Conflict, Operation Desert Fox, Operation El Dorado, and MS Achilles Loro Hijacking. During the last one, he was in the North Arabian Sea and he ended up retiring. Two years before they retired the plane he worked on, the Tomcat. Mike got many medals as well for his service, like Navy Achievement Medal three times, Navy Unit Accommodation three times, Good Conduct Medal five, National Defense Service Medal twice, and Navy Expeditionary twice. He also got Battle Efficiency E, Southwest Asia Expeditionary Medal, NATO Medal, Kuwait Service Medal, Global War on Terrorism Expeditionary Medal, and Global War on Terrorism Medal. He returned to San Diego where he flew back to Virginia Beach, his home at the time. It wasn't easy for Mike to readjust his civilian life, but he eventually got used to it. He's a member of Veterans of Foreign Wars and used to be a part of American Legion, Fleet Reserve Association, and the Association of Aviation Ordinancemen. He worked super hard to get where he was as an over-the-road truck driver, railway conductor, and moved to Minnesota in 2010. Mike was stationed in Jacksonville, Florida, and NAS Cecil Field in Virginia Beach, Virginia, NAS Oceana, and was on six total deployments on three ships. CV-60 USS Sartoga three times, CV-67 USS John F. Kennedy once, and CV-70 USS Carl Vinson twice. He traveled around the world two and a half times, and Singapore, Australia was his favorite place to visit. He watched a guy try and eat a live octopus while it fought back in Thailand. He went through the very narrow Suez Canal between Israel and Egypt. People from both countries on either side with machine guns, ready to fire at any moment. And the first time he was in Singapore, there were about eight others with him in the town, and they needed to get back to a ship before curfew. They found a person who asked to bike them all to the ship in 20 minutes, and they said they would give him $100. Needless to say, he managed to get some cash that day. He was never on the front lines, but was an aircraft mechanic, so his jets were on the front lines. But he was stationed in a carrier, so he was never personally involved in the action. Mike was on a ship 100 miles out in the sea and not personally seeing any combat in front of his own eyes. He was on the southern tip of India however, when 9/11 happened. He thought it was a movie because he was on the flight deck all day, and when he went down with some of his fellow soldiers, they thought they were watching some sort of movie. They didn't move and did circles until October 7th, where they started bombing Afghanistan. He worked on the jets that did the bombing and made sure they were flyable. He has a friend to him who he considered a brother, but at the same time, the ship was large enough where you could see one person once and never see them again. Mike is still in contact with the people he thinks of as friends and has more connections he's trying to make again. He sent letters and emails mainly back home, a few phones for calling every now and again, and when he first joined, it was only letters. When off duty, he would read and watch movies, get some well-needed rest, play cards and work out. Mike learned that life is really rough and that you just need to suck it up sometimes. He missed countless birthdays, holidays with his families, and funeral because he was deployed overseas. He would do it all over again for his country because he's a proud American. He has important messages to say, "Respect the flag, respect our country."
Thank you so much, Chris.
Yeah, wonderful stories. We do appreciate you coming along and certainly thank them for all their service also.
Thank you.
Next we'll move to our next item, is the Fall Sports Recap.
Yes, we wanted to take time today and review our Fall Sports Recap. Our Fall Sports have wrapped up and the Winter Sports practices are either underway or they will be starting soon. So we just wanted to review with you today the Fall season, including the following of our different groups. So for Boys Soccer, they had a season record of 7, 8, and 1. Girls Soccer had a season record of 6, 10, and 0. Our cheer team supported at Pep Fest and during the football games this fall, even in the cold and snow. We all remember the homecoming game. Football finished with a record of 10 and 1, woo-hoo, with their only loss being to Hutchinson Tigers at first round of the state tournament. For Girls Swimming, sent Nadia Pugachova to state in a 2,000 individual medley, and there were some team records broken during the season. Divers had great scores at sections, including some personal best scores. Cross Country had a great season as well, with four honorable mention runners at the conference meet. Several runners had personal best times this season, and many new runners were added to the team. Volleyball wrapped up their season by winning their first section game and then a tough loss to De La Salle. Girls Tennis had a great season. They have a young team that is getting better with every match, and Coach Anthony Brzezinski was awarded with the Coach of the Year for our section. So we're very proud of all our student athletes and look forward to Winter Sports.
Thank you. And congratulations to all those students and coaches in the Fall Sports, and hopefully the Winter Sports can match their records. Next up would be a Community Thank You.
It's kind of a superintendent show right now.
It is. You've got them all. I'm just going to keep going back to that well until you run out.
Thank you. This is a heartfelt Community Thank You that Fridley Public Schools and representatives of our school board, who like to thank the Fridley School District residents for voting to approve the Fridley Public Schools operating levy referendum on November 5th. Levy passed with 60% voter approval. We are deeply grateful to our community for their support. The passage of this referendum, excuse me, the passage of this referendum will make a significant difference in a district's ability to maintain high academic programs, services, and opportunities for our students, and to offset inadequate state funding. The Fridley community has a rich history and a long tradition of supporting its schools, providing every opportunity for our students to succeed as world-class community of learners. We also want to send a big special thank you to our Fridley football team for supporting our work and door knocking in the community during the weekend leading up to the Election Day. Without them, we would not have had the staff to cover as many residents as we did. Thank you to everyone for your invaluable support of Fridley Public Schools as we continue on our journey to make us the best place to learn for all students. We have several other thanks, thank yous I would like to add. We also like to give a personal thank you to all of our volunteers who helped with the door knocking. A huge shout out to Carrie Ryder, who helped co-lead this work. Another huge thank you out to our Communications Department, to Director Jaiel McLamore, to Suzanne, excuse me, to Sarah Burkhart and David Weber, and to the Director of Finance and Operation, Todd Tillen, for their work in running a successful referendum campaign. Last but not least, our last thank you is to a group of parents who volunteered, who supported the information sharing campaign, including our board members Stark, Adam, and Pruwedo. Thank you everyone for all of your support.
All right, thank you. Next on our agenda item will be an audit presentation from Katie V. and Matt Mayer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Thanks for the invitation to present tonight. I'm here to give you the results of the 2018-2019 Fiscal Year Audit. This is a financial audit, and we want to thank the team and your Finance Department for all their hard work in putting the numbers together for this year's report. Our job as auditors is to come in and test and examine and give an opinion on the numbers that the district puts together, and we do that through several reports. We're providing an unmodified opinion on your financial statements tonight, so the numbers we're going to look at in a little bit represent a true and accurate picture of the district's financial position at the end of the last school year. We also did some compliance work as part of the audit. We looked at federal programs that the district is receiving, looked at your internal controls, and also looked at statutes that apply to school districts in Minnesota. Happy to report no findings related to federal programs or state statutes. And when it comes to internal control, we have one finding that we bring up to you each year regarding the small office environment here at the district. We don't believe necessarily there's a cost benefit to resolving this finding directly, but we're going to remind you of this finding each year and just let you know it's not a perfect environment, but the district has done a nice job from a cost benefit perspective in putting some mitigating controls in place to safeguard the district's assets and ensure accurate financial reporting at the end of each year. So a very clean audit for the district for 18, 19, and again a credit to your finance team for all their hard work for these results. I'm going to take just two or three minutes to give you a very high-level overview of the results of operations for the year. As a board, you approved a general fund budget, which was going to have a use of reserves this year. You were going to have a small deficit of about $217,000 on a $44.5 million budget. The actual results for the year were actually better than anticipated in that revenue was higher than anticipated. Administration did an excellent job in staying within the spending parameters that you established for them, so spending came in almost $1 million below budget. And as a result of that, rather than a deficit, there was a surplus this year of about 3/4 of $1 million, which added to your fund balance and improved the district's financial position, which we'll see in just a little bit. Now, at a macro level, the state of school finance at the Minnesota Legislature is actually pretty good, historically speaking. There's six years in a row now of 2% funding, so that gives you some perspective on a per pupil basis on what the state is chipping in towards your general fund budget. But that's on a per pupil basis, and one of the challenges that the district had this year was a fairly significant drop in enrollment. There was about a 5% decline in the number of students that you served here at the district in 2019 versus 2018. And when you're funded on a per pupil basis, that causes a little bit of challenge on the revenue side. And the district did a nice job in not only sustaining operations, but also doing that and also growing your financial health this year. So again, credit to your team for weathering that storm and some headwinds that they had this year when it came to enrollment. So ultimately, revenue was up, it was only up about 1.8%, and the one point I want to make here is that you're going to see the state sources of revenue were actually down a couple hundred thousand dollars from the prior year, and that is because on a per pupil basis, the revenue stream was less because of the drop in enrollment. You mentioned the referendum that was passed here recently. That's another major factor in the general fund funding, and if not for that general fund property tax levy in 2018 and 19, there would actually have been a real drop in dollars available for education here at the district in the 19 fiscal year. I'm going to jump ahead to this chart, a very busy chart. We talked about it a little bit in the work session, and when your fund balance grew about $700,000, it ended up, to end the year, at about a $5.8 million fund balance. And as you're aware, a fund balance is basically your reserve or what's left over at the end of the year with which you can use for the next fiscal year. And we have some various set-asides for that, and we evaluate the district's financial health based on that fund balance. You want that fund balance number to fall somewhere between 7 and 10% of annual spending or your annual budget, and basically after the end of the fiscal 2018-19 year, you fell right in within those parameters that you've established for yourself. So if anyone asks me, are we in good shape financially, or is the district solid financially? Within the policy that you set for yourself as a school board, you're right within those parameters. So you're meeting the expectations that you have, and you were able to achieve that by establishing a budget that administration in turn was actually able to execute for you for the year. There's two other operating funds I want to talk about briefly. One is your Food Service Fund. This is your breakfast and lunch program at the school. We segregate those dollars from all the others, and this fund had a surplus for 2019 and a very comfortable fund balance of about 25%, so a very solid financial position for your Food Service Fund for future years. And then Community Service is the other fund we'll look at, and this is your Community Ed, your ECFE programs, your School Readiness programs, and all of these programs as well ended the year with a positive fund balance and a very solid financial position as well. So the directors of those programs are doing an excellent job with the resources provided for them, achieving the operational goals you have for them, and still having reserves at the end of the year available for future years. So I hope that gives you a high-level overview of the results of the audit and the finances of the district, but if there's any questions you had that I didn't cover, I'd be happy to address those now.
I just want to acknowledge, we know our finance staff and superintendent are doing a great job, and it's great to hear that from an outside perspective that you are also finding that and reconfirming that for us.
That is the case.
So they do really great work. Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you all again.
Next up will be a presentation from Mr. Pyatraschke on the World's Best Workforce.
I'm going to rearrange the speeches.
You can re-give that one because those are so great and powerful.
No PowerPoint though, right? So Laurie, do you have this? Oh, you got it right there, okay. So, good evening, Board Chair Riddle, School Board members, Dr. Heil. Going to, by rule, share with you the results of our World's Best Workforce Report and our Achievement Integration Plan for this year. As I mentioned in the work session, this is something that we're required to do by rule, and there's so much more information to share with us, right? There's such a bigger story to all of this. And the times where we see things that are going great, there's reasons why that's happening, and when we see trends that we don't necessarily like, there's things that you can be sure that we're working on, so we'll kind of talk about that and go through that a little bit. So the World's Best Workforce has five areas that we write goals for, and the last one, when we talk about equitable access to qualified and diverse teachers, that's burgeoning legislation, and you're going to hear more about that in the months and years to come. And actually, you did hear a little bit about it tonight. I think one of the reports from you guys was talking about that. But we set goals for kindergarten readiness, fluency in third grade reading, or proficiency in third grade reading, college and career readiness, graduation rates, and then achievement gaps that exist throughout some of our data. And so when we look at those goals for this year, our kindergarten readiness deals with letter sounds, goal 65, result was 76. Our proficiency in third grade reading was 48 and 63%. Achievement gaps with free and reduced lunch with MCA scores, respectively about a 15% gap in reading and about a 7% gap in math. College and career readiness is the reading portion of the ACT. There's about a 15% gap between our results and our goal. That was an interesting one because our trend is about 33%, so we were pretty close to that goal in both years this year. that goal most years. This is sort of a, an odd-off year. And then technically, right now, we don't even have graduation results yet from the State Department. What they will do is they will break down the graduation rates by demographic, and we don't have, that usually comes out in about the middle of December. So there's four areas to the Achievement and Integration work, racial and economic integration, student achievement, equitable educational opportunities, and reducing academic disparities, and we have two goals within our A&amp;I plan. One is disproportionality with free and reduced lunch, and three-year average, we're looking at about 30%. We've had a slight reduction in previous years, and our goal is to get that, that percentage down to about 20%. And then decreasing disproportionality rate with Black students and suspensions, and we have had really incredible success in reducing the number of suspensions. It's over 50% from year, from last year, but our disproportionality remains fairly, pretty much unchanged. One of the things that I wrote on this slide is that we do have a, a new Achievement and Integration Plan that we're working on right now. Right now, myself and Dr. Heil and Suzanne Samaha are sort of championing that work, and we'll probably be broadening the development of that work. We're trying to define goals right now, and that will kind of set the stage for doing some work over the course of the next three years. So if there's not any questions, you can count on another blockbuster performance one year from tonight.
All right. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to business action items, beginning with a motion for the approval of the 2018-2019 Audit Report that we heard from earlier.
Good evening, Chair Riddle, members of the School Board. Dr. Heil, as you heard from Matt Mayer with Bergen KDV, our audit has been completed. He did provide an overview of the results with pretty clean opinions and, and a good financial position to end the year. So the last step tonight is for the Board to accept the audit as presented. I'll answer any questions. Otherwise, turn it over to the Board.
Any questions? If not, I would accept a motion to approve the 2018-2019 Audit Report.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Stark, seconded by Thornton, to approve the 2018-2019 Audit Report. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up would be a resolution accepting gifts. Every month, we're again fortunate this month to receive gifts from our community, and those gifts this month include donations to Stevenson Elementary School for a total of $140 from Lana Ferris and Hector Saavedra. Donating to Hayes Elementary School, we're as anonymous donor for $12.60. Nancy Anderson and Margine Swanson, who will help be alumnis of Hayes. They donated a number of clothing items that you can see here. I won't list them all, but we certainly thank them for all those items. David DiGiannetti also provided eight winter jackets, and Deanna Roth provided $108 to Hayes. Donating to Fridley Middle School for a total of $80 were Stephanie Sharp Keisha and Kenneth and Beverly Vickin. At the high school level, they were received donations of $90 from Stephanie Sharp Keisha and Allison Hoff. Do I have a motion to accept these gifts and thank the donors for their contributions?
Motion to accept.
Second.
I have a motion by Perito, seconded by Stark, to accept the gifts and thank the donors for their contribution. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Adams?
Aye.
Ms. Delvo?
Aye.
Ms. Perito?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Ms. Stark?
Aye.
Ms. Thornton?
Aye.
And the resolution passes, thank you. Next, we have a resolution about the consolidation of the polling place at the Fridley Community Center. Dr. Heil?
Thank you, Chair Riddle and School Board. Annually, we are required to pass a resolution establishing a combined polling place within the boundaries of the school district. Should we need a school district election that is not held on a day of a statewide county or municipal election? So this evening, we are asking for the Board to accept this resolution.
So just to be clear, this would be if we had to call for a special election. The actual normal election that will be held the second Tuesday, or the first Tuesday of November would be at the separate precincts.
That's correct.
All right, thank you. With that, do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Delvo and a second by Thornton to approve the resolution establishing a combined polling place for multiple precincts and designating hours during which the polling places will remain open for voting for school districts held, district elections not held on a day of a statewide county or a municipal election. Any further discussion? If not, clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Adams?
Aye.
Ms. Delvo?
Aye.
Ms. Perito?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Ms. Stark?
Aye.
Ms. Thornton?
Aye.
And the resolution passes. And now we come to a real exciting portion, the motion for a second reading and adoption of policies.
Buckle your seat belts. So Board Chair, Riddle, School Board Members, Superintendent Heil, we have four policies for second reading this evening. Policy 601, School District Curriculum and Instructional Goals. Policy 604, Instructional Curriculum. Policy 696, Acceptance and Use of Grand Funding. And Policy 697, Assessment Practices. And all of those policies are being tonight, offered tonight without revision.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion to accept the second reading and adoptions of the policies?
Motion to approve all four.
Second.
I have a motion by Perito, seconded by Adams, to accept the second reading and adoptions of Policy 601, 604, 696, and 697. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. Next on our agenda item is the Consent Agenda, which is the meetings of the School Board Business Meeting and Work Session that were held October 15th, as well as the Special Meeting held on November 14th, the monthly financial ports, new contracts, amendments, leaves of absence, termination, resignations, and retirements, the approval of the annual 2019-2020 World's Best Workforce Plan, also a Fridley High School German Students Trip to Germany, March 22nd to April 1st, as well as a softball team doing a trip to Rockford, Illinois, March 26th and 29th. Do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
I move to approve the Consent Agenda as read.
Second.
We have a motion by Delvo, seconded by Perito, to approve the Consent Agenda as previously outlined. Any further comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. Now we move on to written information, beginning with first readings of several policies.
Okay, again, good evening, Board Chair, Riddle, Board Members, and Superintendent Heil. We have four policies this evening for your, for first reading. The first is Policy 602, Organization of School Calendar and School Day. This is a brand-new policy from MSBA that we're going to adopt, and we did make that one change in the work session under Section B, 3B, extracting the word "state," right? And Policy 603, Curriculum Development, Section Three, adding letter "D." That is a practice that is done presently. Going to jump to field trips in Section 610, Section D. Much of this has been moved to procedure, and the new language assumes what was written before. And then Section, or Policy 606, Textbooks and Instructional Materials, a little bit more robust there, is some of the changes. Retitling, reorganizations of three sections in that first section, that Section B that's crossed out is moving later on in the policy to Section C. And then, as I mentioned earlier, a lot of the writing that's on Page 2, 3, and Part of 4 is assumed in those new sections on the fourth page.
All right, thank you. And those will be available if anyone's interested on the district website. Next, we have report from School Board Members, beginning with the Association of Metropolitan School District's Board Meeting, which was held on November 1st, 2019.
Thank you. At our AMSD meeting, we reviewed and accepted the fiscal year 2019 AMSD Audit, as well as there was a guest speaker, Commissioner Dennis Olson, who is the Commissioner of the Office of Higher Ed. He just generally gave us a basic summary of that his office are, they're student-focused, and he spoke about financial aid and said they served over 81,000 students in the state this past year. They also gave out post-secondary grants for childcare, and they gave out about 1,700 grants and with an average of about $3,400 per student. And they also are, keep trying to go deeper into helping families on understanding needs and helping them with their secondary education, so they're also looking into how they can help provide transportation. Another large focus they have is their Get Ready program, and we are actually quite proud to have Get Ready located in our high school and our middle school. And so Get Ready is a federally funded college and career readiness program through the Minnesota Department, Minnesota Office of Higher Ed. So what Get Ready does, it works with the middle and high school staff, students and families, to create a sustainable, future-focused school culture to help our students identify and prepare for their chosen post-secondary pathway. So that's college and career-ready for those students who may not necessarily want to just go to college. So how it does that is by providing students with the post-secondary pathway exposure through curriculum, college visits, through career site visits, and through learning opportunities, as well as administering, administering staff and student surveys on post-secondary readiness topics. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is the Northeast Metro 916 Board Meeting, which was held on November 6th. Ms. Delvo?
Yes, Chair Riddle. Some good news coming out of District 916. They have been involved in a Education Mental Health Classrooms and EMHC's program at Carner Blue Education Center, and they just released their one-year results from this program, and the results are really pretty astounding. So this is a specially-supported classroom to help students navigate academic and emotional and social learning at the same time. And in its first year, two students that were in this program avoided out-of-home placement. Seven families avoided approximately 1.4 million in combined hospitalization costs as a result of being in this program. One student transitioned back to their home district. Member districts that were able to avoid costly midday transportation between the school and other residential treatment programs because this program was able to meet those needs in one setting. Five students graduated from this classroom program, and 77% of students showed significant increases in the management of mental health services. So as you can imagine, we're looking to continue funding this program. Not only is it really great for kids and families and helping them succeed, but it's also saving, saving a lot of dollars that can be put to use in other ways to help other children. So that's really exciting, exciting results. And the 916 District is an intermediate school district, so it has member organizations, of which Fridley is one of theirs. But there are four intermediate districts across the state, and they have been working together to come up with some legislative priorities for immediate, intermediate school districts, and so I won't go into all of those, but they came, came up with six priorities that will serve intermediate, intermediate school districts, so they'll be working on that during the 2020 session. That's all.
All right, thank you very much. Now, the final meeting would have been the Northwest Suburban Integration School District Joint Powers Board Meeting that was held November 13th. I certainly attended that meeting. The biggest thing coming out of the meeting would be that we did approve the Anoka High School STEAM Program as a new magnet program for the Integration School District, so they will begin to be part of the Magnet Lottery, which has already begun for this year, but we're going to start to do the promotional portions of it for them. We do get a lot of students coming in through the Magnet Program and through this Magnet Lottery, so. Most of the programming in the district, things like AVID, ESSENCE, Step Up, Educators Rising, all those programs have started kicking off. They've had a couple of IDPs, which are the inter-district planning sessions. It's a way to move people across. They have another one upcoming here. I know we just did one here insider district with regards to the Bedote and the Native American group. They've had some individual IDPs with the Northwest Suburban on that same topic that occurred, I believe, in early October, so. We also had a time there. It was actually a pretty good celebration day for most of the districts. Three of our districts, Fridley, the Elk River Zimmerman Otsego Rogers District, which is now District 728, as well as the Buffalo School Districts, all had referendums that passed in this past election season, so there was a, a positive breath of relief from those districts that their referendums all passed. And then finally, they're just beginning to do some of their own Achievement and Integration Plan work there. As you heard from Mr. Pyatraschki earlier, we've got with the World's Best Workforce here and our AIM plans. Northwest Suburban also has one, though. Theirs is a little different from our districts because they don't have a specific one for the Integration District. It's actually more of an agglomeration of the individual districts, member districts in there, so. They're beginning those works, so they're helping out and assisting those districts that need some help with their Achievement and Integration Plans, so. With that, I'll move on to important future School Board dates. The next Schools in Equity and Education will, meeting will be held November 22nd, 9:30 a.m. at the DoubleTree by Hilton Hotel in Roseville. The next Northeast Metro 916 Board Meeting will be December 4th at the Bel Air School at 6 p.m. AMSD's Board Meeting, December 6th at 7 a.m. at the Cora Education Center. And our next Fridley Public School Board Meeting will be December 17th with the work session starting at 5:30, open forum at 7 p.m., and the business meeting at 7:30 p.m. here at the Fridley Community Center. As part of that, we also have a Truth and Taxation Meeting on December 17th here at the Fridley Community Center at 7 p.m. Does anyone else have anything for the, the district, for the meeting? Well, I'm just going to put in a little personal plug then. If any was interested out there, there will be two free choral concerts being put on by the Fridley Alumni Choir. They'll be held this Sunday, November 24th, at 4 p.m. at the United Methodist Church right across from Hayes Elementary. And then we'll also be having a second concert, December 8th, which is Sunday, at 4 p.m. in the District Auditorium, where we'll be joining with the High School Choir also. These are free concerts being put on, and we accept donations that we then use for funding for students going on in the arts for scholarships for them. With that, if there's nothing else for anyone has for the evening, I would accept a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
I have a motion by Delvo, seconded by Perito, to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we are adjourned at 8:16. Thank you.